People, I've been hypnotized by the girls. I'm mesmerized by the girls who have my eyes. So I don't pay their love, babies. I try to keep believing faces, it's a happy way. Lovely ladies like them all, 'cause I wanna know. I wanna hold on, yes, people. I've been hypnotized by the girls who have my eyes. People, I'm mesmerized by the girls who have my eyes. Should they will will carry on, 'cause shoulders of their whole face or something. Call me crazy, pulling from 'em, 'cause I wanna know. 'Cause I wanna hold on, people. I've been hypnotized by the girls who have my eyes. People, people, I'm mesmerized by the girls who have my eyes. And I wish they'd never change, they would stay this way. And they'd never change their names. I wish they'd never change, they would stay this way. And they'd never change their names, no, no. People, I've been hypnotized by the girls who have my eyes. People, I've been mesmerized by the girls, girls, girls who have my eyes. Yes, people. Sometimes late when things aren't real and people share the gift of that between themselves. Some are quick to take the bait and catch the perfect prize that waits among the shells. But ours never did give nothing to the tin man. That he didn't, didn't already have. 'Cause never was a reason for leaving. Or the topic of Sir Galahad. So please, believe in me. When I say I'm spinning round, 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 round. Smoke glass stained bright colors, him is going down, 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 down. So it's green like bubbles. Oh. But ours never did give nothing to the tin man. That he didn't, didn't already have. And cause never was a reason for leaving. Or the topic of Sir Galahad. So please, believe in me. When I say I'm spinning round, 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 round. Smoke glass stained bright colors, him is going down, 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 down. So it's green like bubbles. Oh. But I, ours never did give nothing to the tin man. That he didn't, didn't already have. And cause never was a reason for leaving. Or the topic of Sir Galahad.
Welcome to the return of the Dana Point City Council meeting of March 1st, 2016. We will now reconvene our meeting. Mr. Schoffel, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Happy to. Please rise, place the flag. Let me honor our nation's flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for the invocation, this evening's invocation will be delivered by Pastor Jens Christie of Capital Beach Church.
Would you bow your heads, please? Father, as we work together to build this city, let us be the light that leads those we serve to a spirit of cooperation. Teach us to be good role models and lead by the kind of examples that we would like to see in others. Let us work together with understanding and compassion, loving our neighbor as we love ourselves. Help us to be quick to hear and listen, slow to speak and slow to anger as we wait for a message of direction. Give us a spirit of service. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. And thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. Since you have established the very authorities to promote peace and order and just. Therefore, I pray for the various levels of the city officials and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and rightness and confidence in what is good and fitting. The ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around the city of Dana Point. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Christie. Okay, we'll move on to the presentations and proclamations this evening. The first presentation is Business of the Month, which is El Patio. Rachel Johnson, can you please give us our presentation? Thank you.
Good evening Mayor Tomlinson and members of the council. I am pleased to announce the Business of the Month for March 2016. Dana Point's oldest business, El Patio Cafe, or Lucy's as many of the locals still call it today. Tonight, we are joined by the owner Jack Saunders. Since she was in grade school, Jack's mother Lucy dreamed of owning her own restaurant. Lucy started selling her handmade burritos to all the surfers down at San Onofre until she had saved up enough money to open her own restaurant Lucy's 79 years ago in 1937. When the freeway was being built in 1951, Lucy had to move her restaurant down the street to where it still sits today and renamed it El Patio Cafe because she felt that it is just like eating on the patio with your family. Knowing that Jack had as much love for her restaurant as she did, Lucy and her son became business partners in the 80s until he became and still remains the sole proprietor. As soon as you step into El Patio, you feel the local and family fun atmosphere. Many families from all over the country vacationing in Dana Point have made it a tradition to stop by and eat at El Patio. As Jack likes to say, it is the best place for tourists to come and taste the culture of Dana Point. As El Patio embodies everything from the surf down field to the delicious food. El Patio is open for lunch and dinner Tuesday through Saturday as well as hosts and caters many events for all occasions. The most popular items include the shredded beef taco, which are Lucy's original recipe, the halibut tacos and the chili relleno that Jack's grandmother used to make for Lucy Cotton while working on the Cotton Family Ranch. Throughout the years, giving back to the community has been very important to Jack. Each year, El Patio supports the Dana Point Historical Society Scholarship in memory of Lucy and provides the fest of dinner. They also support many different programs at Dana Hills High School, local preschools, as well as many local churches. On behalf of the city council, we would like to congratulate you for being selected as Business of the Month for March 2016. We wish you many more years of continued success.
Jack, if you'd like to come up to the front, we have some presentations for you.
Congratulations, well deserved. What a restaurant you have there and it's a real local fixture. So I know many families go there and one of my favorite things about El Patio is you can go in and there's the big tables up in front and you can share a table with somebody else. And most of Orange County doesn't do that. So you get your own table, but at Jack's restaurant, you can sit together with other families and it's really good. Really friendly experience. It was the first restaurant I took my twins to when they were born 10 years ago. And every time we say, "Where do you want to go?", they say, "El Patio." So that's their favorite restaurant and your staff is treating them like family you have. And you're a real asset to the community for all you do for the historical society and for all you do for the rest of the community. So congratulations on behalf of the city council. Thank you very much. We have a plaque for you.
It says, "A certificate of recognition, El Patio Cafe, featured Business of the Month, March 2016." There you go. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank everybody for, you know, supporting us all these years. You know, it's quite an honor to run a business where, you know, you're doing kids' baby showers and you're doing a person's wedding rehearsal. You know, families trusting us, me, to do their memorials because it's something that's real sensitive to them. And, you know, I'm with them all along these decades and these new eras of the grandkids. And it's just a true family restaurant. Like at a restaurant, we have three mother and daughter teams. We have one father-son team. Many of those people have inherited their job from their aunt, their grandmother. And so there's nothing like it anywhere.
Thank you very much. And I think Heather has a presentation for you as well. Heather?
I know that Jack and his family, they've been chamber members for a long time, a supporter of our community. But I'm not sure if you all know, just if you ever want to learn about any of the history, the surf history of Doheny, Jack is the guy to go to. He's also worked very hard behind the scenes to try and make sure that we honor that surfing legend and history of Doheny. And just the fact that the way that you treat your customers, the way you treat your longtime employees and everybody that comes in with you, we're happy to have you as a part of Dana Point. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Did you bring any guests, Jack? Any family members? Would you like to bring any other family members? Did you come with you tonight? No, just you?
They were all busy.
Probably working, huh?
They're doing birthday parties right now.
They're keeping the restaurant.
Okay, our next presentation is Business of the Month and our March Employee of the Month, I'm sorry. And that is Robert French. Congratulations, Robert French. Mr. Fowler, would you make a few comments about Mr. French?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. He's a pretty big guy, right? So this is Matt's right-hand man. You all know Matt's out in the field, but behind Matt, there's another good man here that you probably don't know much about because he's a pretty quiet person. And he is here every day doing what he does well. And that's take care of your streets and right-ofways out in town. So we have 75 miles of streets in town and all those streets need some repair. And all those streets need some work. And all those streets have sidewalks. And all those sidewalks need repair. And all those things that we do to try and make sure you don't trip on those sidewalks. And then you come to the intersections and we have signals up there. And you've got lights in those intersections and those lights have to be on. And then you've got utility companies out in town that are trying to screw things up once in a while and do things out in the streets. So we have Robert there trying to keep track of them and make sure that they're impacting us in the least amount that they can while they still get their jobs done. We have 20 miles of storm drains in town. And all those storm drains need to function well when it rains. And over the years, we've done a lot of work on our storm drains. And there's a lot of work in gutters and catch basins and new curb heights and things that have to be done out in town. And this is the guy that identifies out here, "We need to work here. We need to work there. Here's where our deficiencies are and here's what we need to do to make these things right." We have 32 vehicles in town. And those vehicles have to get bought and they have to get maintained and they have to get managed. And we try to buy good green vehicles where we can and make sure that those are good representatives of the city and function day in and out, look decent, and when we have emergencies, respond. Because, oh, by the way, he runs the county crew that helps us respond for emergencies out in town. And helps Mike Rose and Matt and with the crews out there looking to make sure that those palm fronds get picked up and those trees get sawed and moved out and so forth. So there's a lot of things that this gentle giant does that are really good for the city. And I'm so pleased to be able to recognize him with the mayor here this evening.
We have a plaque that we'd like to present you. And it reads, "Robert French began his association with the city as streets and fleet manager on January 16th, 2008 in the Public Works Department. Whereas Robert quietly and effectively managed 75 miles of city streets and right-of-way and 20 miles of storm drains with an annual budget of 2.6 million. And whereas Robert instituted a new customer request tracking system to better to respond to residents' concerns and cares for our roadways in town, including placing and repairing signage and the intersection lighting, repairing asphalt and concrete, cracked ceiling, slurries. And with an area pothole to be found in town, which I think is pretty much true. You'd be hard pressed to find a pothole here in Dana Point. And I'd challenge anybody who'd like to show me one, so." Brad has said a lot of these things, so I'll just move on to the end. "And whereas Robert cost-effectively manages our fleet acquisition and maintenance program for 32 city vehicles and now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Dana Point, I hereby congratulate Robert French upon his selection as the City of Dana Point Employee of the Month for March 2016 and express our heartfelt appreciation for his devoted service to the citizens of Dana Point and offer our sincere thanks for his exemplary service to the community."
Congratulations. Robert, did you bring any family members this evening?
I did not.
You did not, okay. Well, we have another gift for you. We have a pin for you. You probably already have a couple, but take some of those home to the family members that weren't able to make it this evening. Okay, we also have another certificate of recognition to make this evening. And that is for our retiring planning commissioner Liz Klaus. And I'd like to ask Mr. Schoffel if he would please make the presentation tonight. A little tongue tied, pardon that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have. We never have to. We're not. It's been a long time, Liz. Remember when you were sitting out there, you were an alternate to the Planning Commission?
Yes, I was.
Liz joined.
I wanted someone to make a mistake so I could get on it.
I think you were waiting for me to make a mistake. I always felt that. Liz joined, what year did you join us on the Planning Commission? Do you recall? Anybody recall?
I think it's nine years.
It's been nine years. However long it was, Liz joined us from the city of West Hollywood, where you served as a Planning Commissioner and did fine work there as well, and she was originally appointed as an alternate to our Planning Commission at the time, and she and Lisa Bartlett, who is now our fifth district supervisor, went on to a pretty good career here as well, would sit in that audience right there, watching any, I recall you guys came to every single meeting as alternates, never got to speak, never got to take a roll call, until, whose place did you take when you rose up from the alternate to the dais? Do you recall?
Somebody on the far end who'd made a mistake.
Somebody on the far end who'd made a mistake. Liz came up, she performed brilliantly that evening, she's performed brilliantly ever since to the very last meeting. She is a great friend of Dana Point, she has a wonderful career as a Planning Commissioner here. She's been through many, many of the controversies, she's been through the good times, the interesting times, all of the times, has always served as a very, very dedicated public servant, great friend of the city, a great friend of mine. Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you.
Come on. And I'd like to tell you that Liz's service and her relationship to our community is so fabulous, she qualified not for just a certificate of recognition, but for a proclamation, which is, you know, as you can see, much nicer looking than the certificate. Right. So I'll read the last two paragraphs. "Whereas Liz has earned the admiration and highest regard of the people with whom she has come in contact," and that goes five times for me, Liz, "and whereas the performance of Liz's duties and responsibilities as a member of the Planning Commission has been characterized by excellent constructive contributions to the government of our community, now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Dana Point, I on behalf of John A. Tomlinson, Mayor, hereby express sincere appreciation to Liz Claus for her distinguished service to the city of Dana Point." Let's have one huge ovation for Liz. I've got to.
I don't take too much time, but the planning staff has very much enjoyed working with you. There's a card with some of our sentiments, and we wanted to present you with these flowers, and I'm sure Mr. Schottkeavis would like to say something. At the very end, I know there are a lot of current and past Planning Commissioners here, and it'd be wonderful if we could get a photograph before Liz.
Thank you, or so. Jackie handed me this until I have the honor of presenting you with the city plaque, and upon reflection, it's only fitting because I think I met you the first day you had moved into town. Liz had moved into town, and she lived in the track across the street, and we had a terrible wildfire in the canyon behind her home. And so Liz called me up and said, "Mr. Schottkeavis, I'm new to town, I'd like to sit down and meet with you." And that sort of began my invitation to her to get civically involved, and she never looked back. We arranged for a ride-along on OCFA, and I tell you, she really got to know the firefighters and understood, and I think was a very good representative in the community after that fire. We talked, and she applied for the Planning Commission. I remember I'm sitting here, and Liz was so polished and so poised, I thought she was testifying before the United States Senate on something. I'm going, "Man, this lady missed her calling." She was always, and still is, the epitome of class, poised, and Liz, I'm happy to call you a friend. I find it ironic that your husband and my father were good friends and fellow Marines who used to have a lot of fun, I think we used to go to Turks every now and then, but having said that, Liz, you know, you've got a wonderful husband, you're a huge part of the Dana Point community, so on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this tile to you for your years of service. Congratulations, Liz. Okay, I see some other Planning Commissioners who I've had the pleasure of serving with and who are currently serving, so I'd like to invite all of you up here, and I hope you'll each have something to say to Liz on this very important evening of recognizing her retirement. Come on up.
Liz, I'm gonna miss you. I started serving with Liz probably nine or ten years ago, and she has just been a very classy, poised person, as Councilmember Schoffel mentioned. In fact, I served along with Councilmember Schoffel when he was on the Planning Commission, and we look at Liz out in the audience, and finally you got to be up on the dais, and I was very impressed. You were always well-spoken, and you did all your research, and I always felt that every decision you made was a very good decision, so I am gonna miss you. You were not only a friend on the commission, but even, we'd go to lunch together occasionally, and we shared a lot of good times, so I wish you the best of luck, and as I said, the city will miss you, and I hope we get to still see you again.
Well, I certainly didn't prepare a speech, and our time had been brief, but it's been wonderful, and I've really enjoyed getting to know you at our dinners before our meetings, and you'll be missed, you've already been missed. We have an empty seat now in the commission, and it's noticed that you're not there, and wish you the best, and hopefully we'll see each other along the way. Thank you very much for making me feel welcome as a new Planning Commissioner.
Liz, I didn't prepare anything either, but Liz and I, we were off to the side at the end of the dais, and, you know, when I found out she was retiring, I said, "I miss my daismate," because she would, you know, always, you know, give me advice down there, and give me advice, pull me aside, and give me advice before the meeting, and seasoned, seasoned, good advice, so I really appreciate it, and we're gonna miss you tremendously, and we already do.
Well, Liz, I was just thinking what to say to you, and I, you know, being on the Planning Commission with you is always a joy, and getting to know you personally is a joy, and which I look forward to continuing to have lunches together, as we do. But I have to tell you, one thing is, one, I really appreciate what you've done for the community for so long, and I know how much work goes into being on the Planning Commission. I don't know if people really appreciate that we get our packets on Friday evening, and we work all weekend to try and be prepared for a Monday meeting, to have something to make a good decision, and so I appreciate that, but I also want to share that I've been in meetings with you, Liz, where there's been hundreds of people in a gymnasium at the community center, and, which we love, you know, we love that, we want to hear from the community, it's a very important part of the process, but just looking down the table and seeing the steady faces of my fellow Planning Commissioners, knowing that we will get through this, it may take three or four hours, but we will make it. I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciated seeing your face, looking back with that assured to you, we're okay. So thank you very much.
Hey, Liz, how are you?
Hey, pretty good, mate.
Good to see you. Liz was there for the entire five-and-a-half years I was on the Planning Commission, from day one to my last meeting, and, you know, it was a real, that group of people that was on the commission was a special group. A lot of what the Planning Commission does is pretty routine, dotting eyes, you know, moving paper through to allow things to get done, but occasionally, something major happens, something big comes to the city, and the responsibilities are huge, because I've always said that what the Planning Commission does, and how they act, and how they decide policy has a bigger and off, you know, you could make the argument, they're the most important decisions in the city. They're lasting, they're indelible, they're there for our kids' kids and beyond, and you get one chance to do it right. And the beauty of the group that we had, when we had those big challenges, everybody did their homework. Everybody was thorough, everybody looked at things and decided for the right reasons, and acted independently, with never, from anything that I was involved in, any external influence that came to play. And it was a real proud moment, or time for me to be involved in that, because Liz was a huge part of that, Norm Denton was a large part of it, and we helped move the city forward and make it a better place, and I think that's something that you can look at and be proud of, that you did make Dana Point a better place. Thank you. Wouldn't you like to hear a few words from Liz or so? I know I would. Liz, do you have something you'd like to say to us?
Yeah.
Would you like to say it right now?
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Is the microphone or it doesn't count?
I was told to be short, I'm five foot three. No, seriously.
That's it?
That's all I have to say. Thank you for the privilege. It has indeed been a good long run and an amazing privilege to serve.
Liz Claus, a legend in our city, thank you again, thank all you folks for coming out tonight.
Sure.
Let's take a picture.
All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by the staff?
Not this evening, sir.
By the public?
Item ten.
Item ten. And by the council?
Item thirteen.
Item thirteen. So we are pulling items ten and thirteen. Mr. Schottkeavis, this is our staff report on item number ten.
The staff report is simply a staff recommendation that the council adopt a motion ratifying the agreement that I had previously entered into with Aiken-Aiken Cone for Legal Services previously executed by myself within my authority, before the agreement is attached, and we have a recommendation that you authorize me to extend it.
Thank you, Mr. Schottkeavis. Is there any questions from councilmembers? None, hearing none. We have three requests to speak this evening. The first will be Denise Erkanov, followed by Carol Kelly and Steve Stewart.
Good evening, Council. Denise Erkanov from Dana Point, and I'm here representing Surf Rider Foundation. Just wanted to make a few notes. We certainly hope that you do collect those funds from the Headlands that have been extended from the city coffers, but, you know, it's odd that contrary to the council's directive of stopping or stemming litigation involving Strands Gate, here you go again, spending the taxpayers' money. And what started out over six years ago as a hasty marriage between the city and the developer, you know, to support a non-existing emergency ordinance, has now turned into a costly divorce item. You know, the city and this developer have violated the public's trust. Citizens have been harmed, taxpayers have been harmed, litigants have been harmed, and all the while, it's costing us over seven figures on the part of the city. Surf Rider has spent probably between five hundred and a million dollars on our litigation, and that remedy has still not been exhausted to recover that. Certainly, we hope you recover these funds. Lastly, under the FOIA Act, the Freedom of Information Act, we have asked formally for MOUs, contracts, and communications, and we've never received those, and we'd like to receive those, because obviously, now we know they exist. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Erkanov. Carol Kelly, please.
My name is Carol Kelly, and I'm a resident of Dana Point. Please vote to deny funds to Aiken Legal Services to continue the litigation with the Coastal Commission for the following reasons. One, there have been six years of unsuccessful and costly litigation by the city of Dana Point on behalf of the residents of Strands Beach. Two, in the very beginning, the Coastal Commission granted the developer, Stanford Edwards, permission to build on this ocean-view property on the condition that there would be multiple public accesses to the beach. Three, all of the current residents were aware of this agreement when they purchased their homes there. Number four, if the current residents want to litigate limiting public access to Strands Beach by closing the existing gates, then let them use their money to hire their own attorneys to do so. Number five, do not continue to use public taxpayer funds to fight this limiting access battle for a small group of wealthy residents. Six, the council can't find money for a town center parking structure, but always can find money for hiring consultants. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your comments. Final speaker is Steve Stewart.
My name is Steve Stewart, and I live in Dana Point, and I'm here to speak to item ten. I am not opposed to the city spending money with Aiken to get money back that the city is owed, that's not what I'm here to talk about. What I'd like to speak to is that we have the necessity of having Aiken and Aiken provide legal services in a legal dispute with Headlands LLC. This item describes a dispute with Headlands over reimbursement and indemnification. The inference to be made is that Headlands, owners of the Strands Development, are not willing to pay some of the legal expenses generated by the city in its six-year effort to defend the illegal Strands Gate access restrictions. It is also likely that the prevailing parties in the four lawsuits that the city lost, either the Coastal Commission or the Surf Rider Foundation, are asking for their legal fees to be repaid by the losing party, which is Dana Point. There may also be penalties assessed by the Coastal Commission. The point of my comments is, the city has litigated this item with the Coastal Commission and Surf Rider for over six years. It has lost four court cases, the most recent in September 2015. After losing the case, the Coastal Commission had to threaten Dana Point with a cease-and-desist order and the possibility of daily fines of eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day to get them to comply with the court decision. We have to hope these fines are not retroactive to six years. We have to hope these fines are not retroactive to six years ago. Why has the city been put in this consistently losing position? Why are we facing new litigation to get out of the way of potentially millions in legal fee reimbursements? There has been a very significant and longstanding failure in judgment on the Strands Gate. It was a mistake to interpose the city six years ago in a dispute that Headlands had with the Coastal Commission. Among other actions, the city concocted an emergency ordinance to give cover in its effort to provide Headlands with what they wanted, which was restricted access to the beach. The judge in the most recent decision called out the city for its justification for that ordinance, finding the justification specious and deceptive. That ordinance and other city legal actions put us in an unnecessary and damaging legal position. That is demonstrated by our four losses in court, and the point will be driven further home when we have a true accounting of what all this has cost our city. There is simply no way to account for the diversion of attention, resources, and all the council meetings and time spent on this issue. Why did this happen? Certain people in our city government wanted to cater to Headlands LLC and its owner Sanford Edward, who is the most notable backer of city council candidates in the city. Those people had a fiduciary duty to the people of Dana Point. In particular, our city attorney owed us better performance. Rutan and Tucker has been nothing but enriched by the legal fees flowing from their bad judgment and failure to get the city out of the way of this disaster.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Stewart. Moving on to item number 13, Mr. Shaw Kaviz, is there a staff report?
Yes.
I think we need to take action on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor, I think you neglected to take action on the portion of the consent calendar that nothing was pulled from as well.
Okay. So which item would you like me to proceed with first?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the balance of the consent calendar, except for 10 and 13.
Okay, it's been regularly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Okay, the vote is five to zero to move the balance of the calendar. And now we move on to item number 10. Is there any discussion on item number 10? Nope. Then please cast your ballot for number 10. Item number 10.
Need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion. I'm having a hard time tonight, I apologize.
Motion to approve. Second.
Been regularly moved and seconded, that the item be moved? Please cast your vote. Oh, I need to, I hit the wrong button on that one. Can you read? Okay, there we go. This thing is touchy. One more. The item passes five to zero. Moving on to item number 13, Mr. Shaw Kaviz, is there a staff report now?
Yes, there is. Item number 13 is a return to the city council from a previously budgeted item for additional professional services due to the overwhelming demand for permit activity at our public counters. If I could, I'd like to ask Ursula to provide us with a bit of an overview relative to the volume of permits and what they're for.
We're anticipating close to receiving $100, close to $1 million in permit revenue for plan check, and these services will enable us to draw from more than just the one firm that was previously approved in order for us to keep on track with our turnaround times on plan check comments. And these are, sorry, these are recoverable fees. The agreement allows us to, the consultant gets a percentage of the fee that we collect. So in essence, their services are 100% covered with the plan check fee that we receive.
Any questions from council? Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Luna Reynosa. So my understanding is that the $600,000, is that general fund money that we're allocating and we're recovering it through the fees or?
It is general fund money. You all have adopted a free fee resolution, so we've set fees for certain services, and plan check services is one of those. And we then enter into, when we contract out, when we don't have in-house staff capability to perform the service, we contract out and we then apportion 65% approximately of the fee that we collect goes to the consultant to pay them for that service.
And this is a direct result of higher-than-anticipated permit activity, and I think an indication of the strong economy that's going on in Dana Point, and the fact that people are reinvesting in their homes for improvements, and we're seeing some new construction. I know there's a couple of projects in the town center that are going to be underway or have been underway, as well as around town, so it's a good indicator. And as Ursula said, these costs are fully reimbursable by the applicants for the various permits.
So I guess I'm still a little confused. You said that we're using general fund money, we're getting reimbursed through the fees, but 65% of that fee goes to the consultant. So where's the $600,000 being reimbursed? I don't understand that.
Ursula, Mike, how's the revenue, how's the general, the $600,000, how is the general fund revenue being recorded to offset the expenditure?
We have plan check fees that are charged. That revenue, you'll see those line items on the revenue side of the general fund. And on the expenditures, on our typical workload that we staff for, that's what you'll typically see on the revenue and expense side covering each other. When we have the level that we have now, we have additional revenue coming in. Back in December, we asked for a budget adjustment to accommodate $600,000 of additional work. What this action does is it gives us a bigger pool of planning folk to draw from to cover that workload instead of just the one firm that we went out with in December when we asked for the budget adjustment.
Okay, maybe I'm not asking my question correctly. I understand what you're doing, okay? But I'm seeing $600,000 allocated from the general fund, so I'm assuming that's paid to the consultant?
To consult, three firms now, but you're adding two today to the one we already have. So over the time period, for the term of these contracts, we could draw up to $600,000 total between the three.
But then do they still, so we paid them, let's just say, there's three different firms, that's fine, let's just say there's one, we paid them $600,000 out of our general fund.
Correct.
But then we also pay them 65% of the fees they collect?
No, no, no.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay.
So when the project comes in for plan check, we charge a fee. We collect that money, and then we send the plans over to the consultant, and then they bill us, and we pay them based on the fee that we collected.
We pay them from the fee we collected.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions from council members? Okay, is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Entertained a motion for this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been regularly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your ballot. The item passes five to zero. Madam Clerk, there are no ordinances to be read this evening, is my understanding? Thank you very much. Moving on to the public comments portion of tonight's agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Please remember to state your name for the record and city address. Thank you. First three speakers will be Paul Wyatt, followed by Tim Tilly and Cindy Fleming. Mr. Wyatt.
Good evening. My name is Paul Wyatt, and I'm a resident of Dana Point. I wish to comment on the resolution passed on February 2nd to create a city, a council initiative to compete with the citizens 2015 Town Center Initiative. This decision is, in my opinion, if not illegal, certainly unethical for the following reasons. First, the decision was justified by the fact that two people, the city manager, Jukshot Kaviz, and the former councilman, Harold Kaufman, alleged that some people were confused. Not only were both of these men neither independent nor impartial, but their assertions were not backed by any witnesses or evidence. The council favored these two opinions over the signatures of 4,200 voters who signed the citizens' initiative. More than 20% of the voting public wished to stop the council from granting variances and privileges beyond the standards passed in the 2008 Town Center Initiative. Under our democracy, the voting public have the right, and the initiative should have gone to the voters without any attempt on a part of council to compete, confuse, or obfuscate the electoral process. Second, the minutes of that meeting documented the assertion of our own city attorney who confirmed that a yes vote for the council initiative did nothing. It would simply be a ratification by the electorate, and a no vote also did nothing. It would make no changes in existing zoning and parking. There can be no justification for an initiative that does nothing except create confusion. Third, the resolution refers to both initiatives being subject to impartial analysis by the city attorney. Would that be the same attorney who has been an integral advisor to the council and has received millions of dollars in legal fees over the past 12 years? And would that be the same city attorney who was directed to draft the competing measure along with two councilmen at the January 19th city council meeting? This is a clear conflict of interest. How does Patrick Munoz give us an impartial analysis of his own work? And lastly, the icing on the cake was the naming of the council's measure, the 2016 Town Center Initiative and Public Parking Improvement Plan. Only in this town is a change for one-bedroom condos from 1.7 parking spaces to one space, and for restaurants from 10 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet to only two considered an improvement. This title was clearly designed to fool the uninformed voter. Three of you voted for the measure, Mayor Tomlinson and Councilman Zoric and Miller. Councilman Olvera voted no, but showed his true intention by writing a lengthy guest opinion supporting the measure. I believe that the council and citizens both want a vibrant, bustling town center and should be working together to this end. Instead, this council initiative continues the escalation of disrespect and mistrust between these two parties and threatens the success of the Lantern District. I ask that you reconsider placing the competing initiative on the June ballot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kim Tilly, please.
Hello, mayor and council members. I'm Kim Tilly. I live in Laguna Nigal, but work in Dana Point. And I'm here on behalf of the Festival of Wales. I'm the co-chair, along with Donna Calas. And I would like to thank the city and staff for their continued support of the Festival of Wales. This year, we celebrate 45 years of the Festival of Wales. We strive to continue the tradition of the Festival of Wales in educating the public about the Graywell migration through family-friendly events and activities. I would like to present the council with a sponsor sweatshirt and invite you to attend all the events and activities during the next two weekends. We'd like to thank you and all of our sponsors for your continued support. If you'd like more information on the Festival of Wales, please check out the directory and event guide, and also go to our website, festivalofwales.com. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Cindy Fleming.
Good evening, councilwoman. My name is Cindy Fleming. The stated goal of the 2008 Town Center Plan under the section labeled "Parking" is, and I quote, "Create and implement a parking program that ensures adequate and convenient parking is made available with the creation of centrally located public parking facilities," end quote. The goal is followed by eight policy statements. Policy 4.6 states, "Create additional public parking, which would include one and preferably two facilities prior to beginning roadway construction." Those statements remain in the city's amended Lantern District Plan and current ballot measure, but are not being implemented. The currently amended Lantern District Plan has added a ninth policy statement. It's a little longer, so I'll hit the high points. If parking occupancy meets or exceeds 80% overall, the city will take action to increase supply or reduce demand. It's already been proved and even noted in the Nelson Nygaard report that some areas of the Lantern Business District are already 100% parking occupancy on a regular basis during certain times and days. These areas already spill into the adjacent residential neighborhoods. So we're supposed to wait until the entire business district reaches 80% at all times before action is taken? We keep hearing from the city that the city means to protect residents from spillover commercial parking. Indeed, parking policy 4.8 still reads, "Prevent excessive town center parking in adjacent residential areas." You try to tell us on the south side that the solution is to create a parking benefit district that would only be implemented block by block if more than 50% of the residents in a block want it, and residents would be allowed to park for free. We've heard this said repeatedly, most recently, I was told this by one of you this last week. If that's true, why does the ballot measure that this city council voted for last month have in Exhibit B, 12.20.010, Establishment of District and District Boundaries, quote, "A parking benefit district is hereby established," end quote, and goes on to define the entire residential neighborhood south of the business district from east of Blue Lantern to and including Old Golden Lantern? No mention of 50% approval or block-by-block implementation. Pay parking legitimizes commercial overflow parking, folks. 12.20.030, Use of Revenue, Paragraph J, goes on to say, "Revenues from residential parking permits may be used for," and lists a number of items that are supposed to be covered by our property taxes. So I guess residents don't get to park for free. If you want to know why the residents are angry, look no further than the lack of proper planning, the doublespeak, and outright misdirection that our city government is providing. We lose the ability to have parties and dinners and get an added tax for good measure. I suppose we're supposed to say thank you?
Thank you for your comments. Next three speakers will be Betty Hill, followed by William Peterson and Gail Bendah, I believe it is.
Hello, I'm Betty Hill. I live in Capistrano Beach. I have a letter to put into the public record from Stromwasser &amp; Wuscher. It's the Honorable John Tomlinson, Dana Point City Council. Dear Mr. Tomlinson and city council members, I'm just going to read a couple of sentences. I write on behalf of the proponents of the 215 Town Center Initiative to convey their serious concerns regarding the potential for illegal expenditures of public funds on campaign activities in support of the 216 Town Center and Public Parking Improvement ballot measure. As you are no doubt aware, the law clearly prohibits the city from using its funds, and I am assuming also staff, to produce or provide one-sided campaign information to the citizens of Dana Point. The mayor and the city council should take care not to run afoul of the clearly established prohibition against using public funds to mount a campaign promoting the city's ballot measure while denigrating an initiative put forth by Dana Point residents. Any impermissible communications should cease immediately and be scrupulously avoided as the election approaches. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is William Peterson.
My name is Dr. Bill Peterson. I'm a 35-year resident of Dana Point, and I've worked and lived in Dana Point for the last 35 years, and I am shocked, I am ashamed of you for to see what you, the city council, is doing to this city. Unfortunately, I just realized last week about these monstrous buildings that you guys are building here, and I called the planning department and spoke to, is his name, Evan Langdon, Evan, okay? And I asked him about my concerns. I wasn't very happy about the first response that I got. But after I emphasized that he was a public civil servant, he gave me info about the five groups that are against what you people are doing to our city. What really bothers me is that... What really bothers me is that less than 24 hours after I talked to him, I get a text from somebody who you guys know, who says, quote, "I heard that I called the city, and I was not very nice on the phone." Now, I was nice to Evan. I did not say anything bad, and I think I'm a really nice guy. A lot of people here know me, and I've been here 35 years. I'm ashamed of you. I'm ashamed of you, 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 and you. This is disgraceful. Goodbye.
Thank you for your comments. Gail Bendah, please.
Good evening. I'm Gail Bendah, living in Dana Point for quite some time now. I've heard about a few others besides Dr. Peterson who have received lately questionable information from City Hall related to the two initiatives on the June 7th ballot. This concerns me, mainly because that means there's the potential of illegal actions on the part of the council and/or on the part of city staff. The law is very, very, very clear about the use of city time and city position related to campaign activities. Comments cannot be intended to persuade when on the city's clock and/or using a city title or position name. Your constituents expect the laws to be followed by City Hall, that's both council and staff, and we hope that we have no further infractions or even situations close to infractions from now on. The community will be watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see, I believe I have Dr. Greg Van Dyke, followed by Sandy Iverson, and finally by
The reason I'm coming is because I was told to come. I've been a practicing physician for almost 30 years, and I love Dana Point. I was raised at Dana Point by my mother, who bought a tub of tenement house back in the 60s. After her, and I notice here that there is love for their services, my father was a P-38 pilot in World War II, and when he died, she took the $10,000 of insurance money and invested in Dana Point in 1963. And I was one of the first students at Dana Point Elementary. I was the first student at Mark Forster. And I was one of the first students at Dana Hills. I graduated from Dana Hills and moved on to the medical business. That's the first half of my lecture. The second reason I'm bringing is I bought a house on Granada, which I have the highest respect for. And Granada is with Boo Lantern and Chula Vista, two of the, to my mind, three of the best streets that there are in Dana Point. It's a house that was frequented by Steve McQueen and Bruce Brown, who was our dead father, in the Cub Scouts. And I was taking this meeting because the neighbor said that the rehab facility that I have, the residents initially, back in May, began to throw cigarette butts and other items, and were creating loud noises. And my discussion is to, how will we rectify this situation? Number one, when you look up and down the street, I don't think there's a finer house in Granada than we have. You mentioned the traffic. We have one employee per shift, one car, which was a complaint of the neighbor. And one of the complaints we got was a car that was parked in front of the yard that had nothing to do with us. But nonetheless, I have initiated a client-based, mature system, instead of young punks, older type of people that are more a minimal to quiet and to peace. And we have a regulated space for cigarettes now, so they can't be thrown over the ledge at the neighbor. Beyond that, I have the highest regard for the quietness of the area, and I welcome any of the city members to take their personal trip up and down Granada Drive and look at my house. I'm the house with the whale on the top, and they can notice that there's quiet and peace on the street.
Good evening, council. Sandy Iverson, Capistrano Beach. I'd like to clarify something that came up two city council meetings ago when you were voting for your initiative. And we were talking about how people were confused or told things that we were not telling them the correct information. And at that time, the city manager was, and this was reported in the paper, that we were at the Easter egg hunt, yes, and this young woman was bothering people. How dare she? So, this young woman, who is educated, articulate, knowledgeable, she's an attorney in her own right, she sent me a clarification letter that said, "Regarding gathering the Town Center Initiative, clearly Doug Chuck has avoided using my name in an effort to avoid committing libel against me. He knows I'm an attorney. I answered all his rapid-fire questions, no problem. Timeline after we parted, he spoke to a female park employee. The female park employee beelined right over to me. Then acting on behalf of the city, demanded I stop trying to get signatures for the petition. I pointed out she violated my constitutional rights and I was an attorney. She walked away. A few minutes later, she returned and apologized. I accepted her apology. Then I continued gathering signatures, informing the public, answering all the questions I was asked, and generally having a successful day of signature gathering. She also asked me to say, 'Draw your own conclusions. Some city employees and politicians may attempt to confuse Dana Point residents with articles or a competing measure, but lucky for us, the Dana Point citizens are just too smart. We successfully collected enough signatures for special election. Thank you, Dana Point residents. The people have spoken. Maybe it's time the certain city actors stop their tricks and start to listen.' Thank you."
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. My witness was Andrea Swain. I didn't instruct any city employee, because as soon as I was done, I went over and joined my family with my granddaughter. So, it is what it is, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Next question is person Sean Prestige, I believe it is.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sean Prestige, and I am here on behalf of the Architectural Guild of South Orange County. The Guild is a nonprofit professional organization whose membership is comprised of practicing architects, landscape architects, and urban planners in San Juan, San Clemente, and Dana Point. Our mission is to advocate as community members and design professionals on best practices and to help our staff and elected officials make the right decisions for the future development of our area. I personally am an urban planner with a degree in city and regional planning from San Luis Obispo, and a San Clemente resident, and a long time, you know, employee of several sailing schools and coaching in Dana Point, so I have a lot of experience here. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of some concerns we have regarding public parking and these issues in the Lantern District. We have generally been very supportive of all the great efforts the city has done as far as streetscaping and a vision for a really true walkable downtown area. That is truly a vision that is the only millennial in this room I can really get behind and applaud you guys for. However, we have some concerns with the current parking plan or lack of plan for the area. Both the Nelson-Nygard study and various documents throughout the visioning plan have identified public parking as a key element to the success of this district, and we have really seen a lack of a cohesive plan to develop such public parking system. In working with city staff, who've been very helpful, they've indicated that the main strategy is to monitor the public parking situation, in that this threshold is when 80 percent of the parking spaces are full. That's when they will begin to plan for a public parking system. But the project, the problem is, is that if you look at any successful downtown area in California that's been revitalized, and any successful public parking management system, is that these are long-term projects. They take a long time to buy land and process that. And by not immediately working on implementation project right now, the city is missing on several opportunities. They're missing out on the opportunities to establish a parking district, to gain funds to build this. They're missing out on the opportunity to get the right land, and they're missing out on gaining the trust of their residents. Because right now, it appears that you guys have a very possible viable solution for a great downtown and a great mixed-use area, and you really don't have the support of your residents, and it's a shame, because this could be a great project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the public comments section of our agenda this evening. We now move on to public hearings. I see we have one public hearing, Mr. Shot Khevis. Would you please introduce the item?
Absolutely. The next item on your agenda is a recommendation that you hold a public hearing and uphold the Planning Commission's action to deny the variance request for the aforementioned property on Cali La Primavera and adopt a resolution associated with denying that request for variance. What I'd like to do now is ask Ms. Luna Reynosa to provide a staff report with her staff. Thank you.
I'm actually going to ask Evan Langdon, the associate planner, to give the staff report.
And good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to direct your attention to your screens and to the presentation for this item. As was mentioned, an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny variance 15-004. Before I get into the details and the history of the variance request, I'll give you your bearings. Our subject property is one lot and containing four units within two buildings, two detached duplexes, and fronting Cali La Primavera. Beyond that, the largest landmark in the neighborhood, of course, would be St. Edward's Church. And at the rear of the property would be a descending slope, fully landscaped, and then surrounded by residential development of various scales, types, densities. The property itself, of course, is again developed with four units. They were constructed in 1984 under the standards of the county of Orange. And the building is three stories tall, and we'll get into more detail of that in just a moment. The site plan, again, showing those four units. Our subject property, our subject unit, 33895 Cali La Primavera, is at the lower, or at the bottom of your screen, and within that red circle. And the hatching is showing the approximate area that will be the subject of tonight's variance discussion. Street views, our subject unit is at the left, at the top and the bottom of your screen. And as I mentioned, the building is three stories tall. It's as it was permitted and ultimately constructed in the middle 1980s, again, under County of Orange standards. This is a rear view, and is seen from property just across the slope I mentioned earlier. In this view, you can very clearly see the three stories. Under our current zoning code standards definitions, our first story would be the lowest, as here, and then go up two and three stories. The subject of our discussion tonight, void space, is the lowest level here. The elevation, or the drawing, I should say, at the left of your screen, that is a section of the original approved plan from the 1980s. And notable there is that the original design of the building, as you can see at the lowest level here, did not include the doorways or the single window that you can see now in the photograph. That space has changed over time, but we don't have record of permits for the doors. They presumably have been there for some time. But again, as you can see, the original construction didn't include that, that particular facet. Again, a section from the approved plans from the 1980s, a section through the building. As I mentioned, the lowest level or the first floor would be here under our current standards, and then the second and the third. At the right of your, of the rendering, that would be Cali La Primavera, and then again, that slope I mentioned earlier. Again, as approved, that lowest level, or the lowest level of the building, was void space. It wasn't approved with a floor otherwise improved. It was simply dirt, and you'll see some photographs of that in just a moment. And as labeled on the plans themselves, it was called void space. Another term is crawl space under more modern drawings. These are photographs of the adjacent unit to our subject unit, and I've included them here as they show more or less, or to the best of our knowledge, what that void space looked like when the building was initially constructed. Again, unimproved, and by that I mean there is no concrete flooring, no electricity, no plumbing. It's simply dirt and the underbelly of the rest of the building. The dirt, incidentally, has been placed with purpose and as a support for the foundation and the overall structure of the building. That's why I've included these red lines and showing the upward slope or trajectory of the dirt as originally was laid out with the building's initial construction. So chronology of events, then, what brought us to this evening's presentation. In January 2015, the city became aware of unpermitted work ongoing at the subject property, and code enforcement was deployed and issued a stop-work order to the appellant. These images are more or less what code enforcement found on that day and when that stop-work order was issued. That former void space had been improved with concrete flooring, drywall, electricity, of course, the door and window, you can see in the image there. But again, a stop-work order was issued at that time. Work unfortunately continued after the stop-work order was provided, and the space has now been improved with electricity, plumbing connections, although those have been capped, concrete flooring, and fixed furniture. A few more images of the finished space. So what does that mean, the changing of that crawl space or void space to what it is today? By adding in the concrete flooring, by adding in the electricity and so forth, but specifically, and most importantly, that concrete flooring, the nature of the space changes. Where it was before, simply void space, again, now it has been changed to a story as per our definitions in the Dana Point zoning code. The definition of a story is on your screen, but essentially it is the space between floors. And a floor can be made of any material, concrete, wood, et cetera, but of course, in this case, concrete. But by changing it from that unimproved void space to concrete flooring, improving it, et cetera, it now becomes a story. The building, as I mentioned earlier, was approved as three stories. In the zoning district for this property, two stories is the standard or default maximum number of stories that are allowed, with the potential to go up to three stories, and depending on the specifics of the topography and where particular design facets are met, there is no mechanism in this zoning district to allow for a fourth story. So again, the conversion activities have changed the building from a three-story to a four-story building in violation of the zoning for the property. In summary, again, or I should say, in December of 2015, at being noticed that the work that had been done changes the nature of the building to a four-story building in violation of the zoning code, the appellant replied for a variance. That variance was heard by our Planning Commission in December of last year. The Planning Commission determined that the findings to approve that variance could not be made, and so denied the request. Staff's recommendation, and of course, as the project hasn't changed since then, is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and to continue that denial of the appeal. concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Any questions from city councilmembers? Okay. Hearing that move on to, the appellant has a 10-minute timeline for his presentation. Mr. Borger, Borg, should I go?
Good evening. My name is Roger Borgy. I just moved here in 2014, and I don't have a PowerPoint presentation to show you tonight, but I do have documents I'd like to be able to walk up to the diocese and present to you as my evidence this evening. Okay, fantastic. Many times, my architect and myself have asked the city for a stamped copy of the building plans, engineering plans, and structural calculations needed to prove how the building was originally constructed. There's been a lot of speculation and comments and accusations made by the city, but there's been no proof of stamped plans to actually back up a lot of the things they have to say. This building was actually constructed in 1981 under the 1979 Building Code, prior to the city of Dana Point ever being an incorporated city, and prior to the Dana Point zoning code that's constantly talked about here, which has been the sole focus of the Planning Commission throughout this entire situation. The building code has not been something that's been focused on, but it's rather been the zoning code. This building was approved by the county in 1981. When it was rudely permitted, it was permitted as a duplex, two duplexes. It was mistakenly permitted as a three-story building, when according to the building code it was built under is actually a four-story building. That ground-level space constitutes a story by the definition of the building code. It's not, wouldn't be necessarily- It's not, wouldn't be necessarily classified as crawl space. It's a full-size room, has a full-size door, has an eight-foot-high ceiling, and according to the building code, it was built under in the, in the eighties, whether it has a concrete floor or dirt on the floor, it still constitutes the size of a story. But it was, the building was actually converted into a condominium in nineteen eighty-three, so those duplexes became the La Primavera Condominium Association. It was permitted as a condominium development, and the structure, I have a copy of the, of the report here, the legal description, and was converted to a condo. And on item three of page three of that report, it states that by a structural engineer's certification, that the building is actually a four-story building. It names off the stories in there, it's on just, under general notes, item three. So Bobby will pass that out to you guys, you'll actually have a copy of, of the, of the document when it was converted into a condominium. As you can see, it was up at the bottom of the screen, but the photograph here shows four stories. Each of my neighbors also has a full-size door, a full-size room, and some of these units are improved just like mine is. It's, it has concrete floors. This, the unit over here has a concrete floor, has drywall ceiling, they all have electrical, and they're all being used for storage, every single one of them. This, this building's been in, in, here in Dana Point for thirty-five years, and when I bought the property, I had no idea of any of this, this situation. This is a copy of a letter I, I wrote to the city asking for a copy of the building plans and why I couldn't get them. And according to Gil Enrique, she said that the building was built in eighty-two, part of the city is incorporation, and that I should go ahead and go look at, to the county of Orange for a copy of these plans. I know these plans exist, Lynn Muir knows these plans exist, but these plans have never been forthcoming by the city in this regard. When I bought the property in, in September of twenty fourteen, the property is advertised for sale as having a four-hundred-square-foot bonus room. And it was, this bonus room was suitable for storage, possibly a workout room. This is in the brochure here from the real estate company. I'm going to pass this out. You guys can look at it. This is a copy of my seller disclosure statement. There's been accusations made throughout this thing that I went ahead and did unpermitted work. I've never done anything here with this building that required a building permit, except I did go ahead and start to put in a, a larger window to replace the window that was there. There was a stop work order issued for that, and I complied with that stop work order. And that stop work order was for window only. It did not tell me to cease all work in the room. I got a copy of the work order here, I'll, the stop work order, I'll pass it out so you can see it. On the letter, it was accompanying the citation, it came on January sixteenth, it says, be aware that the structure is being declared substandard and a dangerous building to, due to the unpermitted construction. Once again, I did not do any of the unpermitted construction on this at all. I'm also going to go ahead and pass that to you, just to go ahead and prove the fact that I did not do any unpermitted work here. I have a copy of the seller disclosure statement on my property, signed by the seller. And under item four, it says altered downstairs storage room by adding concrete slab, drywall, recessed lighting, electrical outlets, a window, plumbing, for hot and cold water, and replaced the door. They did advise me the alterations were done without permits, however, I had no idea at the time that this was some kind of an illegal room, or I never would have bought the property in a million years. Also, I was never provided with a copy of the CCNRs, which outlines the rules and regulations for this condominium association, and so I had no idea there was any problem with doing any work on this room at all. The only thing I ever did to this room was I put some paint on the drywall that was existing. I went ahead and put some tile on the existing concrete floor, and I installed some storage cabinets. None of those items require any building permits whatsoever. The only thing that required a permit was the window, and as I stated, I stopped work on the window. I went ahead and repaired the drywall that was taken off the day that Bill Beatty came to do the, issue the citation. These are pictures I have of the room, which was what the condition of the room was when it was originally purchased by me, which shows the existing concrete that's on the floor, the existing drywall, the existing air ventilation, which is still there, nothing's been changed with that, and the existing small window that's off in the corner here The, the space here already exists. There's been no new space created. The building is a four-story building. It's a legal, non-conforming building, and I've not increased the size of this building or added a story as the city or the planning commission has asserted. I've really created nothing here. The storage room space has been here for thirty-five years. It's not a nuisance, it's not a danger, it's not an eyesore, it blocks no one's views. No one could even see this room except if they're standing on the building across the canyon from where I live. It affects no one, and will still affect no one with or without you, with you grant me my variance or you don't grant me my variance. The room and the space will still be there. Granted, the variance will not set a presence for some other, someone else because, since this is a four-unit condo, was, is a legal, non-conforming building, it could not be rebuilt in the current condition it is right now if there's a fire or earthquake. It doesn't meet the current building standards for the city of Dana Point, so it'd have to be reconstructed differently than it is right now. Dana Point's zoning code, I've been told that there's no other four-story buildings in the city of Dana Point. Well, I have photographs of other four-story buildings that do exist in the city of Dana Point. One of them's over on Blue Lantern. I have photographs, I can go ahead and show you that. I did no work that required any permits. I'm, like I said, only painted over the existing drywall and installed the storage cabinets. These are photographs of what it looks like. I know you saw some of them up there, but this is what it looks like now. And I'll pass these around so you can take a look at them. This room also has no heat, no gas, no water. The, the water was put in before, the piping was put in, it was put in by the prior owner. And they were going to put in, I guess, a sauna or a shower down there. It was never my intent to use this as any type of livable space, strictly a storage room. So I had the water pipes capped off and the drywall sealed, so the plumbing, any existing plumbing there has all been basically removed. So as I said, the room has no heat, no gas, no water, no toilet, no shower. It's not livable space, it's strictly a storage space like a garage. So I'm, I'm asking you to go ahead and grant me my variance and allow me to keep my room. I've invested about eighteen thousand dollars into that room to go ahead and make it a, a nice storage room. And once again, I had no idea that there was ever any problems here with the city with this. I would never, ever have gone ahead and even purchased the property had I known that this was the case. This was, the storage room was the main reason why I bought the property. It just, it differentiated itself from other condominiums in, in the area, and it gave me a, a place where I could go ahead and store, store my surfboards and store my personal effects. So. Is there any questions? Sure.
Did you say there's no heating or air conditioning in there?
None. There's no heat. It's, it's a storage room. There's no heat, there's no plumbing, there's no toilets, water, gas.
I'm looking at a picture with air vents.
Those air vents were existing. Those are for circulation inside the room. That were, they were there when it was originally built. Also, there was an accusation made in the city planning report that I somehow installed a wall to the rear of the property. Every single one of the storage units in the building has a rear wall that's a part of the original construction, it's nothing that I went ahead and put in. Like I said, this building's been here for thirty-five years. We've had people live in this building for thirty-five years. These rooms have existed for that period of time. It hasn't harmed a single soul in Dana Point. And now, all of a sudden, I'm being told they want me to demol, demolish my room, jackhammer out the concrete, destroy the drywall, turn it back to what it was back in nineteen eighty-one, and for what purpose? How's that going to benefit anybody here? It's going to cost me a lot of money, and I've already spent a lot of money just to defend myself on this action from, from day one. So it's a regrettable situation. I hope that I would meet the city council in much better terms than this, so never mind, this might, never my intention when I came to town to ever be involved in a controversy like this.
I just have one brief question. I, I'm looking at a, a picture here of what appears to be a desk.
Yes.
With a printer, pictures of family members.
Right.
San Francisco Forty Niners helmet.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a Niners fan, I applaud that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe not this past season.
Yeah.
The, it, it looks like what's being stored here is
Books.
Like human beings, there's a chair. You don't put a chair there for people to, for books to sit on.
No. But sometimes, sometimes I, sometimes I go down there, I store things down there involving my business, I go down maybe to complete some paperwork.
Store the family photos and...
Yeah, I don't have room for them all in my house. So if I go down there and I'm going to go ahead and complete some documents or just, I'm a State Farm agent, by the way, I've been in, so State Farm for thirty-nine years. Sometimes I work out of my house, and so it gives me a space to go ahead and sit down and, and take care of some things.
And, and, and I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but in, in my common experience as a homeowner, a former planning commissioner, a real estate lawyer, and a person possessed still of all five of my senses, this looks to me like a home office. Doesn't look like a storage area.
If you look at the other pictures, you see storage cabinets and throughout the rest of the room.
Well, but y, y, you understand, because the rest of the room is, is devoted to some other use, this still looks like a person is sitting there spending considerable periods of time, which I think is what's really at issue. And we, I'll save this for discussion, Mr. Mayor, but I, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at an accurate, accurate picture of what was, what, can you tell me what date roughly that picture was taken?
That's taken, that's taken in January of this past year.
Okay, so January two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, roughly.
Is this stuff still there?
Yes.
Okay.
And by the way, I haven't been down there, it was too doggone cold with no heat down there.
Okay.
So.
Right, that, that was my only question.
Scott, if that, if that's, if that's a problem, if that desk is a problem to the city, I would be happy to remove that desk and put solid storage cabinets down there. That would make everyone happy. I'd be willing to do some compromises here to work with the city on this situation, but I've never been, given an opportunity for any compromise from day one.
So, okay, that, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, if you had a comment or question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. I, I read your letter of December seventeenth, twenty fifteen. You referred to this area, I wrote down, eight times as a basement. You also then again, in February sixteen, you four more times called this a basement. Is this part of your appeal, the basis for your appeal that this room is in fact a basement?
Well, it's actually what it is, it constitutes a story. The city calls it attic or crawl space. It has a full-size door for its, you know, crawl space, you normally have a three-foot door to go ahead and crawl into a attic or crawl space, but this has a full-size door, as all my neighbors have full-size doors, that for easy access in and out of the room. Whether somebody sits in their room on a, on a dirt floor, they sit, sit on a concrete floor, everyone has access to these rooms. Some of these rooms have got access for, I guess you call plumbing, plumbing, if you have a plumbing issue or plumbing backup, you can go ahead and get that taken care of down there. So there's full access, all my neighbors have full access to their rooms.
Okay, I think I understand. Thank you.
And whether I call it basement or a storage room, it's, it's really meant to be the same thing. It's, it is a basement, it is a storage room, it is a story. It's a part of the building, it's been there for thirty-five years before we ever had a zoning, ever had this zoning code. So.
I have one more. One more quick question. Now, I was, the presentation that was up there, and they showed the unfinished space.
Yes.
Do you have access to the space from inside your house?
No.
Or you have to go outside?
I have to go outside, I have to go outside, down some stairs, into the, into the room. So it's not a, it's not something that has a stairway in, from, from the interior of the house. By the way, the property is sprinkled, if that makes any difference, but it's, yeah, that's, it's, you have to go outside and go down to get into the property.
All right, thanks.
No, the stuff I, I've given you to pass along when you've all done with it, I appreciate you have it back and...
I, I'm sorry, you cannot have it back. It's in the public record. You can get copies of it later on if you'd like.
Really?
But now it's part of the official public record, we're going to have to hang on to it.
Oh. Okay. I think my attorney has copies of it, so I'll, I'm sure I can, I can get it. Okay, so you'll make me copies of these then? Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Lynn Muir. I'm an architect in Dana Point, have been for fifty-three years. I'm a resident of Dana Point of sixty-six years, so I know a little bit about this. And the, the building itself is a legal, non-conforming, four-story building. That's my interpretation as an architect, and if I was building that building, it is a four-story building. And under the code, the uniform building code under which it was built, that is a story, the lower level is a story. In the current zoning code, they've changed the definition of a story to require a floor, where in the, from seventy-nine and up till eighty-five, it did not require a floor to call it a story. If the height from the upper floor to the ground level was greater than six feet, it becomes a story. So that is a story. The planning documents show it as a three-story building. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to find the structural drawings because both the design architect and the engineer are deceased. We tried to find them. The, some of the structural elements that Mr. Borg has accused of installing is in the other units, so they were necessary as far as the structure is concerned. But in my opinion, as a registered architect, this is a legal, non-conforming, four-story building. We ask for the space to be non-habitable space. It doesn't qualify as habitable space. There is no logical reason to not allow this to be used as storage. The building is thirty-nine foot six tall, and no new space is being created. It is an outside access only, so that there's, in my opinion, there's no reason not to allow it to be used. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's, I just want to make sure that the council is clear that there can be conflicts and definitions between the building code and the zoning code. And the building department defers to the planning division before they issue a building permit to ensure that new development is in conformance with the zoning code before they will issue a building permit. So I agree that the three-story building that was permitted under the county is a legal, non-conforming building. In other words, it's grandfathered in, but only permitted improvements can be grandfathered. So the improvements to the void space, those were not permitted, there's no grandfathering in for that, and those were done under current codes, current building and current zoning codes. So we defer to the zoning code for definitions and standards to see if that's legal. So the reason this all came to our attention was we received a complaint from an adjacent property owner about the work. Code enforcement went in and did an investigation and found that work was done without permits. And there was a discussion about how can you make this work permitted? Well, before they could issue a building permit, they had to confirm with the planning division to ensure that it was in conformance with the zoning code. The standards were looked at, definition of story, which has been given to you this evening. And in this residential zoning district, four stories are not allowed, and so it couldn't meet that particular standard, which is why the variance was requested by the planning commission and is now before you this evening. In staff's opinion, it's difficult to make variance findings for a building that's already built and being occupied and being enjoyed under the zoning standards that were affected at the time. There's also a concern about the structural integrity. Since this original case was brought before us, there's another code enforcement case for one of the other four units that has done some similar work because a complaint was received, and our building official has gone out and inspected that property as well as this. And there are some concerns about the structural integrity of the building based on the moving of the dirt, that wall that was back there, structural elements. So in terms of being able to indicate that this variance would not affect the health and safety of other folks, which is one of the findings, at this time, it's not certain that that, that particular finding can be made. So those are the basis for the reason why staff is supporting the planning commission's decision and the recommendation that's before you this evening. And we're available for any other questions that you may have, but I did want to clarify that you can... we're available for any other questions that you may have, but I did want to clarify that you can have conflicts between the zoning code definitions and building code definitions.
Thank you, Ursula. Is there any further questions from council members? Mayor Perot?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do want to follow up a little bit on my earlier question. I, I admit, I, I thought I knew the answer, but at the end, I was a little bit confused, uh, by the answer when you said that this was both a basement and a story. So, maybe let me, uh, try to ask it, I'll ask perhaps someone on staff. I don't know who's best qualified to answer this, but, uh, I was looking at, uh, our definition of a basement, uh, and it seems that the main issue is where the exterior finish grade is. Perhaps someone can show me, if you can pull up the slides and let me know where that exterior finish grade is, and maybe that will answer my question.
While Evan's pulling up that particular picture, John, perhaps you can, um, talk about the definition of a basement under the zoning code?
Yes, the zoning code, uh, definition, and I'm paraphrasing somewhat, but essentially, it, in order to be a basement, it has to be wholly subterranean. That is no exposure, uh, above grade. Now, it does allow for a minimum amount of light wells that may provide light down to a, a window below grade, but essentially, other than that, it has to be completely subterranean. So, if you look at the picture on the right, you can see that whole level down there, which is now has been made into a story, it's completely exposed. It's not covered up. So, that is not, does not meet the definition of a basement.
Where's the exterior finish grade? Below that or...
Yes. Well, it's, 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 you have to look at the grade around the whole perimeter of the building. So, the, the finish grade is below, well below the bottom of the door on the lowest level. The finish grade is down there.
Okay, all right. I think I understand that answer with regard to our definition, and now this brought the question of conflict. I was looking at the nineteen seventy-nine edition, talking about grade. Maybe they don't conflict. Maybe this is a question of the city attorney. I don't know if you have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have used the term conflict. I think you have a definition for building code purposes, and then you have a different definition for zoning code purposes. You've got to comply with both. There are, I mean, one of the issues, I mean, just hypothetically, if you were to grant the appeal and grant the variance, um, one of the conditions that we would recommend is that you ensure that all building code requirements are met. There are building code requirements for a new four-story building that we have no idea one way or another, or I have no idea one way or another, if this building complies with. Um, but those are the requirements that apply to a four-story building as defined by the building code. In our zoning code, we've come up with the term stories, and, and this is a very good example of why we came up with that term. Um, back in the, Scott, you probably remember the dates better than I do. I want to say maybe two thousand and four, five era, um, there was a lot of consternation in, um, the, uh, the Lantern Streets, Lantern Village, about the fact that there's so many hills or sloping lots that people were constantly asking for variances. And so, we came up with a new zoning ordinance that was intended to eliminate the need for people coming, asking for variances all the time. And so, we changed the code to allow for three stories instead of two stories, um, but that was intended to be for our zoning definitions, not for building code purposes. So, you have to look at both, um, when you're, um, you know, building something within, uh, with any, anywhere in the city, but in particular in these hilly, uh, slopes.
Okay, so, uh...
Is it, can you offer an opinion then, based on what our, our code says and, and the other code, whether this is in fact a basement or not?
I don't think it's a basement. Um, I, in my, in my opinion, a basement is something that's effectively underground. You know, there might be some exposure, but, you know, it's basically underground. This is a, um, if you look at the prior slide that showed the, sort of the side, uh, the one that shows the void space on it there, um, if you look at this, uh, side view, the side that's being pointed to by the arrow where it says void space, that's completely exposed. The front's completely exposed, and on the other side, it's completely exposed. So, this is effectively an above-ground space. The finish grade is, um, more or less right below the arrow, the, uh, the level line that you see. Uh, if I'm understanding it correctly, that would be where the finish grade is. And so, the entirety of the structure is above finish grade. An example of a basement might be if you've driven through, in the Headlands Development, there's a lot of basements being built. If you go out there, you'll see that people are digging down underground and digging out, um, space to create an underground area, uh, game rooms or whatever, you know, uses they're using. And those, um, spaces don't count as stories for our zoning code because they're below the finish grade, which is, you know, the, the grade that you see when you're driving along the street. It's a little easier in most cases there to figure out where that is. So, you know, this is, this is an unfortunate situation. You know, a gentleman buys a house that has some work done on it, but the owner of the property is responsible for pre-existing, um, issues. Um, if we could go to supporting document J for a second, one of the, this is more than just a trivial issue, and I want to point out exactly, you know, something that's important. But actually, before we change, if you look at the, the diagonal line, the slope, right behind or to the right of where the arrow is that says void space, that's a slope. I mean, that's a very steep slope there. So, now if we go to supporting document J... Um, this is the neighboring property. Um, just to give you a sense of what it used to look like, you know, there was, you know, piled up dirt. This is the neighboring property of my right. I mean, okay, yeah, you know, it's basically just sort of dirt, unfinished dirt. There, these are retaining walls, and then behind this plywood area, you know, that's where that slope is. Um, so you see another kind of picture of it here. The, this is all designed by structural engineers long before the city existed to make sure the house doesn't fall down and that the adjoining house that it's attached to doesn't fall down. Something that the city is insisting on, um, we're, you, uh, the, the city staff's position is this has to be put back unless there's a variance granted. If it is put back, one of the things that staff is, uh, insisting on is that a structural engineer make sure that this situation is safe, because if you go to, um, the second set of pictures on, this is what it looked like when we first, uh, were called out on a complaint. You know, now all of a sudden, you have floors, this is where there used to be a shower area, which has been removed, um, I'm told. You had unfinished drywall here, which is now finished.
Actually, the drywall was there and was taken down when the window was being worked on.
The, um, this whole area, the point is this whole area, this is, this is closed off now. They're drywalled in. Um, the dirt that, uh, when dirt is piled up against, um, uh, retaining walls, it provides part of the structural support. Um, somebody that knows what they're talking about needs to come out there and do an analysis to make sure this is all safe. There's probably footings involved that need to be evaluated. Um, so if you were to grant the variance, um, you know, if you feel like you can make the findings, one of the things, as I mentioned earlier, that we would, um, you know, ask you to include would be a condition that it comply with, um, all building code standards that would apply to a four-story building now, as well as having, um, a structural engineer come out to make sure that all this work that's been done, um, doesn't render the entirety of the building unsafe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see any further questions, so we'll, we'll close the, uh, public hearing on this, and we'll, Ursula, did you have a question?
I got a question from staff. Um, for staff, on page forty-five of the staff report is the county-approved use permit eighty dash twenty-three. It's a very hard copy to read. The type in the middle says that it is construction, for construction of a three-story, and it looks like the date is nineteen eighty. What does this document say, or who issued it?
This is, this is a, a Orange County-approved permit that was granted by the Orange County Planning Commission at that time for a three-story, four-unit condominium project.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the council. I guess I'll start. Uh, I feel bad for the appellant that he's in this situation and invested his money and, and that he has this situation, but I also see the problems with it and the fact that there was no structural engineer involved. These things were put in without a permit, so the city inspector didn't have a chance to come out and take a look at it, and that concerns me a lot, uh, the fact that we don't know what we have here, and it certainly was unwise to proceed with the fact where it was put in unpermitted and these experts and engineers weren't allowed to, to see what was really going on here. I mean, I think also have a problem with setting a precedence on the fact that, you know, if we allow this, then maybe others can come by and say, "Well, you know, heck, um, you know, he was able to do it. If we provide the right materials, maybe we can do it." So, that's just my starting comments. I welcome others to join in.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? This'll be a question for staff. Um, since we have what appears to be an initial project to be, meant to be three stories, could I do what has been done to this property today?
No, under the current zoning code, um, four stories is not allowed. So, even with the hillside ordinance that was put into place after the city was granting frequent variances on sloped lots, um, the maximum is three stories with certain setback, uh, step backs, et cetera, incorporated into the design of the building.
If I wanted to do that, could I do it with a variance, if the variance was approved?
If you could make the variance findings, yes.
Okay, um... What was already said, it, it, this is a complication of time has caught up with us, and now somebody has to pay. One of the things that we're not, we've got a yes or no decision to make, and that's yes or no for a variance. We, we, we are not a mediator, or we're not the group to reach a compromise. Uh, that, that right now is outside of ours jurisdiction. Um, we're here to address whether, uh, variance should be approved, and in this case, in my opinion, it's a variance after the fact, instead of a variance before the fact. I understand these building and, and zoning conflicts, um, but I just find the situation that we have and the decision we have to make today, right now, is unfortunate. That's all I got.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, I think the, uh, planning staff and the planning commission, uh, made an excellent analysis of what I would agree is an unfortunate situation. Um, with respect to the conflict, uh, to paraphrase, uh, what, what the city attorney said earlier, um, the zoning code prescribes use of property, the building code prescribes, uh, structural integrity, safety, um, that sort of thing. They, the, the two codes are intended to accomplish entirely different purposes, and, and being someone who's on the planning commission back at the time, when there were three attempts to get a hillside variance, uh, hillside vari, uh, not variance, but zoning ordinance through, I can tell you, um, uh, we got, we got it through on the third time, um, and a lot of consideration was given to the uses in these areas. So, uh, it's not surprising to me, we wound up with three stories, and that was a considered decision at the time with respect to the use of the property. Um, what the building code says about how close stairs need to be with each, you know, to, to each other, what stories look like, what the, uh, what the structural integrity components, things are, that, that has to do with the building safety, and it doesn't have to do with what the city has determined, uh, is the appropriate use to which the property is put. So, absent a variance, uh, from application of that zoning standard, in my view, it's an unpermitted use, and as an unpermitted use, it's, uh, enjoyable as the, as the, uh, city has prescribed here. I'm, I'm a little concerned, um, that at, at one point, the testimony of the applicant, appellant indicated that it was simply a storage area, and then I'm looking at pictures where there's a home office that looks like it's, you know, used, you know, fairly continuously there. And when I asked, uh, about that, I, I got some testimony back that said, "Well, not the entire space is used for a home office. You should see the rest of the space." I did see some other pictures. There's a, a very, what appears to be very nice guitar amplifier, some golf clubs, you know, stored there. Nevertheless, um, sure looked to me like it was, uh, being put to use as a, um, uh, as a personal use space, which would be in keeping with the, uh, or not in keeping with the, uh, zoning for that area. So, getting to, um, possibly the most compelling reason to me, uh, to deny this variance is that, uh, variances are exceptional remedies under the zoning, under our zoning code, really under anybody's zoning code. Variances, um, have been referred to in the literature as constitutional safety valves, such that, um, uh, if you were to strictly apply the zoning to a particular case, uh, and you left the person with essentially very little reasonable, uh, use of their property, such that they might prevail in an inverse condemnation action for regulatory taking of the property, that's what a variance is, is traditionally intended for. Not surprisingly, um, there are a series of findings that have to be made before you can grant a variance as a governmental agency, and those findings have to be supported by substantial evidence. I'm not going to read through them here because they're outlined, uh, very clearly in the staff report, and I think the staff did a pretty good analysis of applying the facts of this case to those standards and concluding that there's no way that this body could make those findings with the evidence that's been adduced at the planning commission hearing and also at the city council hearing. So, seeing, uh, no support for the mandatory findings for a variance, seeing, uh, a pretty clearly impermissible use, and the fact that, uh, this is not a legal, non-conforming use for the reasons, um, uh, very clearly stated by our, uh, community development director earlier, um, I, I do feel bad for the appellant in this particular case. Maybe, um, a little more due diligence on the front end might have been in order. Um, the city attorney's correct that the owner is responsible for the conditions that they exist out there, and, uh, regrettably, but justifiably, I would urge my fellow councilmen to deny this variance and uphold the planning commission's unanimous decision.
Is that a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move a resolution to city council of the city of Dana Point, California, upholding the planning commission's denial of variance V one-five dash zero 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 four for creation of a four-story by allowing conversion of crawl space to habitable floor area at a currently three-story duplex located three-three-eight-nine-five Calle La Primavera.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Oh.
Uh, you know, based on the motion, and I'll echo what, what some of the other councilmen have said. I mean, this is an unfortunate situation, but we do have to look at, at the law, basically, whether we can make findings to support a variance here. Uh, so I took a pretty good look at each of the, uh, requirements and to see if there were facts that might support those findings, um, and I, and I'm struggling to, to find them here. Uh, I, I do want to, I guess, note, in, in my opinion, I was looking at the proposed findings in the resolution, uh, they appear to say the, the opposite of, of what they should say. I don't know, it's on page seven, if everyone wants to take a look at that. Uh, for example, in number one, it says, "The finding is that the strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified regulations would result in practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardships, et cetera, et cetera." I think that should say would not result in, uh, otherwise, it, it sounds like we are making the findings, uh, in support of the variance, and I, I believe that, unless I'm misunderstanding them, if everyone else is taking a look at them, I, I think, uh, they're supposed to say the opposite of what they say. Uh, so...
I, I think, I think that the first sentence is what the finding is, and then the text following the first sentence is the, um, staff's, um, or I guess in this case, the, uh, planning commission's response to that. Am I correct, Ursula?
Yes, correct.
That, that's what it appears to me, that they were simply listing what the findings would have to be made in order to grant the variance, but the way it reads is...
Probably should have had a colon or something after that.
The, it, it is resolved by the city of Dana Point as follows, uh, and then it says findings, and then it says basically that we're making the findings for a variance. then it says, basically, that we're making the findings for a variance. And then it has support for why we should not, but I just think the language should be clarified there.
We, we can clarify the language in, assuming there's, you know, a vote to deny the appeal in the resolution from the city council. Let me think about this for a second.
The, Mr. Munoz, the motion, as I understand it, is to deny the variance. I don't think we need to make findings with respect to that.
That's correct, that's what I was thinking out loud.
I think we could make that based upon the substantial evidence adduced at this appellate hearing, as well as the planning commission hearing, and don't have, have no mandatory findings whatsoever.
Yeah, you're correct. And I guess to address council member Vicsoorik's concern, perhaps the minutes can simply reflect, because that will then be part of the record, that after each first sentence of the findings, there should probably be a colon to make it more clear that the first sentence is the, is the finding that has to be made, and then the following sentences are the facts that staff included for the planning commission to adopt and that the planning commission adopted to support those given findings. Does that make sense? It's really just sort of a grammatical cleanup to address the issue that Mayor Protem raised.
If I can comment, just the, so the motion is not, it is to accept the recommended action of adopting the resolution, and as drafted, those findings, we're going to make it clear that the first part is the finding that we would have to make in order to grant the variance, but then the, the part that's in bold is basically the facts to show why we cannot make that finding.
Correct. So the motion would be to deny the appeal, except the staff recommendation, with a notation in the record to reflect what you just indicated?
Okay.
Is that, if that's acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion, so I'm, 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 I concur with that, thank you. Looking at everybody else.
I just got a comment to make here. And I'm just going to echo what everybody said. This is a really unfortunate situation. I'm the first one to say I'm a private property owners' rights advocate, and this is a, this is a really unique situation where this space exists. The problem that I have with this is that those improvements, improvements were made and the excavation was done underneath. We don't know what's happened in there. And so we really don't know if they're safe or not. We don't know what happened to the footings, we don't know what's going on in there. And so on the surface, you know, I would lean towards, you know, if we can go, if you can go and prove that, that the improvements were done up to code and they're, and they're safe, you know, I kind of want to lean in your, in your favor on this. The other side of this is exactly what the other council members have said, is that we have to abide by the law, and the law says you're non-conforming, and that this story is not, is not approved. I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm kind of struggling with this one because I, because I, I look at it, I look at the pictures of it, I don't understand why they didn't go ahead and finish that space off. It is an exterior space. The problem I have with that as well is you could easily turn that into an apartment and rent it out, and that's again, I believe, a non-conforming use in that area. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I, I'm going to have to lean on, on the code on this and say this is a really unfortunate situation. You know, I read your letter, there's a couple of things in there that I just didn't agree with either. You're saying there's no source, there's no, there's no fire source, there's no fuel, there's no electrical, which is, the electrical is a source, the wood is a fuel source, or is a, is a source and the, and the wood is the fuel. I mean, it's there. You've said there's no electricity, I read up through this whole thing. There, there are improvements down there that would make this a livable space. So I, I, you know, I apologize, but we have to, we have to follow the code on this one. And I'm sorry that you've been going through this and it's taken this long, but I'm going to have to support the motion.
I see that we have none. New business, there is also no new business this evening. Staff reports, Mr. Chaquevez.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Munoz.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Individual council members, Mr. Schoffel.
Just like to say that on the twenty-seventh, the Dana Point Symphony opened its season at St. Edward the Confessor Church to eleven-hundred very happy people. Hope to see everybody at this dius at future concerts. It was quite an event, and we have three more. The next one is April sixteenth, just a tremendous community event, looking forward. And speaking of tremendous community events, looking forward to the Festival of the Whales over the next couple of weekends. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Olivera.
Nothing yet this time.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one comment I'd like to make, and this is referring to the last council meeting regarding the linear park around the Zephyr Project. You know, I know we denied the CFD on that, and I stand behind that decision. However, I would like to instruct staff to go out and work with this developer and find out what, exactly what it's going to take to get the park built as it was presented to us, and come back with a report and see where we are in this. And there was some confusion about what are we getting if we approve it, if we approve it, if we don't, I'd like to know exactly what are we going to get on this and if we can build the park, like the developer said, we're going to get the park as it was presented. But if you could do that.
Mr. Miller, that, that instruction has been given, so we will be sure to follow up on it.
Thank you, and I will turn in my list of reports or meetings to the clerk. Thanks.
I too will turn in my list of meetings to the clerk, and I have no further comments. Thank you, everyone, and have a good, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was just going to say I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, I didn't mean to preclude you, Mr. Vicsoorik, so I apologize. All right, next city council meeting will be held on March fifteenth at 5:00 PM here in this chamber. The meeting is adjourned, have a good evening.